All right, I will open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and the time is seven oh five P M. All members of the planning board are present here in Town Hall. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means members of the public, members of the board or applicants can participate here in Town Hall or through the Zoom link virtually. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Bill, we discussed moving to item three first, as this is a simple request from a previous applicant. Can we first confirm if the applicants here online?
You sure could do it. You hear us out?
Yep, I got you. Thanks, guys.
Oh, yeah, thanks for joining tonight.
Yep.
Bill, do you want to brief the board on this one first, and then we'll turn it over to Adam?
The board approved the site plan and special permit for two six powder mill in, I believe it was January of of twenty-four. I can check that, but when it was, but anyway, it's coming up for two-year renewal. And there has been no, at this point, or the bylaws require that if there has been no activity that the applicant either requests renewal for cause, which the applicant has a writing, I think I brought it up to you, the guys there. And if the board chooses, they can be, the permit can be extended by two years by an administrative agreement from the planning board. I think that the applicant probably has a few things to add, but in general, we have his letter there, and I can turn it over to Mr. Stat.
Sure. So, Adam, we received your letter, we reviewed it. If there's anything else you would like to provide now is the time.
No, I mean, I think I basically laid out what's been happening for the last two years and some of the hardships that I've had to go through, but hopefully, you know, with economy changing and things moving in a better direction and people interested in the project. If I have this two-year extension, I can make something happen for all the hard work we've put into, you know, building and getting this approved to what it is now.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions from the planning board?
I, the only thing I would ask is that it might be a good idea for you and I to meet separately with the applicant.
We, we can meet afterwards for sure. We can meet offline with Adam, no problem. Any questions from the planning board?
Yeah, does property still for sale?
Yes.
No options on her?
It's been under agreement with PNS's two times now.
Any other questions? Bill, what's the action here?
The action is requests that you would grant the applicant's request to extend the existing special permit and the existing site plan approval. My recommendation would be all the conditions stay as are. There are some requirements there that are still have to be fulfilled before the project is going to building pertinent stage. Also, a development agreement, as you may recall, is part of the year approval, which has not been executed yet at this point. I think the complications have delayed that, and I think the judging on the circumstances on the ground, the two years is going to be necessary for the applicant to work these issues out and hopefully come to a resolution that moves everything forward successfully.
Wasn't the approval contingent on the development agreement?
It is.
What do you mean by that?
Well, one of the requirements is that a development agreement be executed. It is prior to building permits at the time. We haven't, we haven't completed it, and it still hasn't been completed. So that still has to be executed. So, in other words, the condition would remain in outstanding along with.
That's a condition, or was it contingent on the vote?
No, it was a contingent that we said one of the conditions that applicant shall, applicant shall execute. One of the other circumstances, as you know, is there's circumstance with some of the infrastructure, water service tools to be through D P W, we're required, we need that as well.
What's town staff recommendation?
Recommendation would be to extend everything as is, which maintains requirements, and we just discussed in particular, to be clear, and the development agreement and is part of the existing special permit, and I can pull it up if the board prefers.
Do we need to motion the extension for a two-year period, or is it to a specific date?
To what?
Do the motion for something like this, would it be for a two-year period or for a specific date?
My recommendation would be two years from the effective date of the previous permit.
From the effective end date of the previous permit?
No, the effective date of the previous permit. So when it was approved, I, this gave me, but. No, no, he's early, it's early.
Yeah, it was February twenty twenty four is when it was, that's why it's coming up in February twenty twenty-six for the two years.
So it would be, whatever the date was, I believe it was probably, if we proved it February, it was probably a twenty-day appeal period, so probably like March first or something like that.
So the approval would be two years from March first-ish?
I don't have the exact date, but roughly, yeah, I mean, I can calculate, but I don't have that right now. Exactly, it's going to be right in there. And that's my recommendation, we're to can do whatever they choose with it, but I think, given the circumstances, there's some situation that has to be worked out. And it will take some time.
Adam, you're requesting two years?
I think two years would be sufficient, yes. Okay, thank you.
The original, the reason I selected two years, that's the original length of our approvals across the board.
Other questions, comments? All right, I'll make a motion to grant an extension of an additional two years of the effective date of the original permit of the special permit and cycle that includes all previous conditions.
I second that.
A good.
Yeah, and as all the terms of the conditions apply, so, so everything, if the board approves this extension, everything as is in the existing decision lines, so nothing's changing from that.
Yeah. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Five zero to approve the motion and the extension of two years. Adam, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Adam, I'll write up something on that, and we'll schedule something in the next week, Richard.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Bill, let's turn to item two, and I will open the public hearing for one fifty-one Main Street. This is an application filed by Matthew Paul of Concord, Massachusetts, and this is a special permit request and a site plan approval for the business zoning district in the down, using, also using the downtown overlay district site requirements under the D O D. I presume this is the team for tonight? Is Matt here? Hi, Matt, nice to meet you. Thanks for coming in. Would you mind, just for the record, introducing your team? We just have, it's procedural, we just need everyone on record.
Sure. So down there is Dan Carr from Stamsky McNary, the Civil Engineers and Surveyors, Jonathan Mcfee, partner from Studio Troyka, the architects, and Per Cash from Lemonbrook Landscape Architects, and Jordan Bradley from Studio Troyka, the architect.
Bill, you want to give us a briefing on this first, and we'll try to, I presume you have a presentation prepared for this evening of some sort?
Really long one.
That's okay.
That's my favorite.
Yes, this is, this property, as you recall, is the former Epsilon property, sort of pizza-shaped property, I guess, piece like, and it falls within the downtown overlay district. The number of units is three units, three residential units and commercial space, which qualifies as a mixed use by right, there's special permit. I'm sorry, for site plan, however, the site plan has an obligation for design review because of the location. A special permit is not required for the actual structure, but what we have tonight is a special permit request for parking waivers. So to be clear, because of the number of units, it's not a special permit, it's strictly for the parking, which is like the only thing we have there. So it's a little unusual in that sense. So we have a site plan, we have designer view, and three red lights, commercial falls under mixed use, and a request for parking waivers. There's been a for the peer reviewer, we have green engineering with Jim Thorne, who's online now. The go-ahead was given, I think, a little, I'm not sure exactly, but probably ten days ago, twelve days ago. I don't believe that they, Green has completed their review. However, I did speak with Jim today, and he's has reviewed, or D P W sent as well as any of the other tidbits that have been flying around from various reviewers. And the, in this case, we retained ten hats from Institute Architecture to conduct a basic designer view. If you recall, our designer view, we wanted to adjust a little bit to kind of give change how it was done a little bit, so the board had clear direction of what, if there's any architectural changes, and it was provided to the applicant as well, and those came in last week, and you should have a copy of those in front of you. I also printed out Mr. Hall's statement of how he addressed designer view and the perfect itself, which is something I think is the board will find helpful. So that's review, and anything else I can pull up as we have it. There's a presentation that I'm going to turn over when you're ready, and it'll be PowerPoint presentation, we'll share the screen for viewers, if we have any online. Oh, you're Jim? And I think that's everything. Anybody have any questions for my little intro?
Okay, so everybody's.
Not yet.
All right, yes, we're happy to hear whatever you have.
Bill, do you want to stand or sit where you are?
Some, what's easier, you can stand here, and I can give you the clicker, and let me just make sure that I have the screen here. And make sure.
So I was just going to go through a few images to kind of show the board what we're trying to respond to in the design plans, and then I'll pass it over to each of the consultants to walk through their section of the documents, and we can give any questions or comments after we kind of walk through together.
Okay, I'll get out of the way here.
Bill, are we sharing screens?
So we got through a few points for this project, initially we were calling it the station loss, but I see that the old fire station is going to be Donald Station, so I didn't want to steal Mr. McDonald's naming rights. We're calling it the Gateley, which is actually the owner prior to Epsilon, and they were a local family that owned it from about the nineteen fifties, and they used to lease the property to the Austin Main Railroad. You can see in the older shot here, there's a really appealing density about the town in general. And our site is in the lower left there, just on the other side of the textile worker housing, you can see the old train station just popping, popping above the roof line there. And so we're interested in this concept of infill density, and I'm trying to re-anchor this corner of the intersection of Main Railroad, and given the triangular shape of the lot, you can see that even the train station was a pretty narrow building, pushed out towards the apex. And after there was a train station, it was a shell gas station for about forty years. The tanks were removed in nineteen ninety, so it's been either a vacant use or parking for the last fifteen to twenty years. So it's something of a brownfield vacant lot location, which may not be appealing to most people, and this is sort of what it looks like today. But I look at it as something a little more potentially exciting, think about the geometry of Flatiron Building in New York, and this oak planting done by the environmental artist Joseph Boyce in Castle, where he proposed planting seven thousand oaks to restore bomb sites from World War Two, and to comment on the importance of having natural features within urban renewal projects. And so Bill's probably a little bit tired of my face, as I spent a lot of time asking questions down here in the planning department, and during that time, we had a a local artist, young woman who did a little graffiti tag for us on the existing building, instead of doing a slick developer presentation in the window. She did this guerrilla architecture mural, which is the Flatiron Building, we climbed by King Kong, and her quote was from the music producer Brian Eno, "I'm interested in the idea of art as a conversation. The most exciting part is art that is a conversation we didn't know we wanted." And I, I think that's something that we're interested in doing here tonight is just talking about what's been possibly done here and what we would like to do. And as you know, the mill is something that you've looked at quite a bit, and there are aspects of the mill which are a little bit grittier and and dirty, and I think that has some appeal to it, its authenticity, and I think that's really a quality that the town has in general. And there are interesting juxtapositions, the parking garage pushed in between the older traditional buildings, the bridges over the water that have really dynamic quality. And we looked a lot at the buildings that are specifically recommended by the board and by the zoning bylaw, especially here on Mason Street, the continuous storefront, and the separation of the the ground floor from the upper floor. There's some applied decoration, and then there's different massing, particularly the Masonic block is a really tall substantial building with the three floors and a half-story out of the street level. So that kind of scale I think is really interesting in meeting the density of the mill. And then the other one here on Main Street, the continuous storefront, but the variety of the storefronts and the different businesses that are here, and also the glass is not down, that sidewalk itself, but is up on a water table. Just a quick walk down the rail trail, so this is the rail trail in our site on the left, and the railroad housing or former railroad housing on the right. This is our building on the right-hand side, which has vegetation right up against the back wall. This is a pretty typical of the rail trail experience, where you're hitting a lot of backsides of buildings with exposed mechanical, crossing the railroad bridge here at one fifteen Main, which I think is an interesting development. And parking, something Will and I were talking about is as the lots are deeper, as you go down Main Street, a lot of people are going to hear parking behind the building, which was not something we were able to do in our location. And with that, I'd like to pass it to Dan, though he's going to be in a different file, which I'm not sure where Bill has that.
It'd be really nice to get Bill around.
He always comes back eventually.
We can pause for questions on that, my little for Bill? Any questions thus far?
Words, if we wanted to do. Because we want to get paper cards.
Well, I'm happy to be a little patient. Any questions thus far? We can talk procedure then instead. So typically, you know, applicant provides presentation materials, I turn over the board for questions, comments. We get staff input, in this case, we have some design input as well, so we'll go do some of that in the middle. We'll enter that, a lot of that info into the, into the hearing itself, it's a public hearing, we want it on record. And eventually we'll get towards some type of closure, and we'll decide if we want continuance or we can close there. And tonight, my guess is we probably won't close tonight, since our design engineer hasn't had enough time to review all of the items, so I anticipate we'll probably have probably one continuance on this. Does that all sound reasonable from your point of view?
Yes, and we've received some of the comments from Tim Hess and from Wayne.
Bill? Sorry.
We've actually started to put together responses to that, we just don't have it in drawing.
That's completely fine. We need some tech help to pull up the next.
How do I get to the drawing set?
Is it one from the left?
That's the main drawn package.
The, the original. You'll get it for that.
It will be. It's within.
And I have, here's all the materials here.
I don't know.
Yeah, patient, so he's an outpatient therapist.
Yeah. But also wearing it from. Yeah. Earlier, today, or Jim.
Better than, whatever.
Well, if it's zero open, I don't get.
You can have that file out. I might have erased it when I put the new one on it, right?
I think, yeah, today's.
Oh.
In the Google Drive?
Let's let me get it here. I'll do so, man. I got the. That, this isn't it?
No.
And then you can leave me. Can you show us back here? I'll show you which one you want.
Yeah.
I got two of them, all true.
You sent two of them.
Are long boring. You guys weren't kidding.
Oh, Chris, I was wondering, I think there's a thing, offers that we can resolve, we're coming very close to resolving tonight, so let's not, everybody has to come back.
That would, that would be great for everybody, I hope.
I don't know what they are.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Because it's not, I don't think he cares. Do you, does anyone remember where there is parallel parking along Main Street, but I guess it's further back? It's before the site?
Currently is.
I, I feel like there's some right in front of the pizza bar, and that's next door, so that's.
Separated by a part. Yeah, so there is the drive aisle. Yeah, this is the existing building on site here, and there is like a curb opening here, and then there are spaces
Okay.
on, on the road here. Across the street, they go all the way up to this.
Yeah.
For the reason that there aren't any currently, I would assume.
It's because there were thousands for.
Multiple curbs.
Yeah, exactly.
So what Matt's trying to do is clean up that edge, and then that would obviously provide space, real estate for spots.
Yeah.
Which would be great.
I agree.
Yeah.
We've heard from D P W that paint is pretty expensive these days, but we can find a way.
You want to talk through the parking waiver while we're waiting?
Sure. Yeah, so we're proposing five parking spaces on site. The, so the, what we're proposing is retail and office space on the first floor, and then the three residential units above, and the parking requirements are one and a half spaces per residential unit, so for the three unit, that's the five spaces. And then the retail office space is one space per five hundred square feet of gross floor area, which results in six spaces, so technically, there are eleven spaces required. We're proposing five, and the idea is that we're gonna hold the spaces on site, the five parking spaces on site for the residential units, and then anyone using the retailer office space would park on the street. And we've, I've, I've gone through Google Street View of this area for the past several years, and there's almost always multiple spaces available on the street, so doesn't seem like it, so.
So my primary question to that would be, where do the long-term parking occur for employees since the street's two hours?
It's a good question.
And if you haven't thought through it, that's completely fine.
And I do hope that we would allow mill. And some parking. Hope we don't take away that.
Bill, just so you're aware, we, we just, we're just trying to enter some stuff into the record, the parking request is for five proposed, and the required is eleven.
Okay.
And one question that the board has is where will employees of retail space park for the long term, since street parking is two hours, so something to, something for the team to chew on.
Uh, that's a good, that's a good point.
But we can proceed.
And, um, let's go, we just unloaded, okay, here you go. This is the one you wanted here? That's it?
Are you still sharing, Bill?
There you go. Still sharing? Oh, excuse me. Sorry, Jen.
I like the name.
Good.
No.
That was a nice time. Is this one?
Yeah.
Bill, you're doing great.
Okay. And again. Are you?
All right, so I'll just look you through kind of the existing conditions on the site. This is a really zoomed out plan here, the pizza-shaped lot is here, the Ascent River is here, Railroad Street is behind the property here, and then Main Street is here, and then Railroad and Main Gate right around here. So this, this is the existing conditions on site. The site is almost entirely impervious, over ninety-five percent impervious, the building is here in the eastern corner of the lot, and the parking lot goes all the way to here, so there's only this little tiny area that's not impervious of a lot. And the Ascent River rail trail is kind of here, and it's, it's higher in elevation than this property. There's a retaining wall along the property line here that keeps the grid higher by the property, and then there's the former railroad housing here, and then the Ascent River behind that housing here. We did go to the Conservation Commission for the work, since we're on very outer edge of the two-hundred-foot riverfront area, and we did get approval from them for this work. So this is the proposed plan here. So this is the proposed plan here, um again, the existing building is in this corner here. That is proposed to be removed and new building is. In this area here and then the five parking spaces are here. As we mentioned before, there are several existing curb cut openings into the existing parking lot. Um, but we're proposing to both those and only leave open and reuse one existing one to get to that parking area. Uh, one of the town engineers comments was um to to actually close another. Or or partially close one of the existing curb openings, the neighboring curb thing here starts um. A little bit along the frontage of this property here, so we would just shift that over to meet the edge of our frontage here. To close that or partially. This is just another plan showing uh what's proposed on site and more stripped down plan. Um, let's go back to this one now, um we're proposing this connect to town super and town water. There's an existing uh sewer manhole in Main Street here that we're posing to connect directly into. With our proposed sewer line, um opposed to connect to the town water line over here. And. And DPW has looked into our request for the water withdrawal, because I know that's a big concern in town right now, we. They did allow us um the gallons per day that we need for this development here, so we have at least that and I know DPW is. At least in the process of looking at the uh, you know, the product as a whole. We're reducing impermeables on site, we're introducing green spaces where there currently are very few. So just by reducing impermeable, we're reducing the rate and volume of runoff that leaves the site. Um, but in addition to that, we are proposing some leaching catch faces on site, uh one for the parking area. And then two for the the roof drains from the building. So um those those catch faces will further reduce the rate and volume of runoff leaving the site, even though we're already reducing impervious surfaces. Uh, we're proposing to rebuild the retaining wall or at least. Or part of the retaining wall along the rear property line here. As it's in poor condition, um it's less than four feet in height though, so it's not a it's not a major construction deal with that. Um, the existing, there's a a portion of the existing wall that is to remain. And uh between that wall and the proposed building, we're proposing some crush stone, just because it's a smaller. So there we've got some details on the infiltrated hedge facing. We were talking about the possibility of adding more on sweet parking.
Yeah, needs to get together with Wayne.
Yeah, so we're looking at adding um some on-street parking in front of the toes current cuts or isn't here. Um, if we have the width, of course, we we go.
May I pause you there, is there parking on the south side of the road currently?
Yes. There is all along, all the way up to um the intersection with or the entrance to the parking lot to the south. We're bringing over here somewhere. So this is the utility connection plan, um sewer's gonna connect by gravity. Um, since the pipe is quite deep in the street. For. Sedimentation control, we're proposing some construction fences around the area of work. Some silt sacks in the existing catch faces of the street to capture any sediment that may come from the site. And I think that covers. Civil set, if you guys have any questions or if you want us to.
Um, may now may be a good time to check in with Jim. Jim, I know you haven't had much time to look over these plans. Um, but I wanted to see if you had anything you'd like to flag for this team during this meeting now. Um, otherwise, I anticipate that the process will be similar to previous is that. You'll work offline to review the site plans, provide comments and then allow. The applicant's engineer team to respond to those comments, so again, do you have anything you'd like to flag for discussion purposes during this meeting?
Uh, yeah, I have I have a couple of things, um so one thing was um. In your presentation, um you mentioned that this used to be a gas station. And so there could be contaminated soils within the site, um. Have you done any testing yet to determine if the soils on site are contaminated?
We've not done any core testing, but we did a a phase one review with Cooperstown Engineering. And they looked at. Uh, all of the DEP reports and the the general conclusion is that the. There's no significant risk uh in the current state. And our plan is to minimize the excavation of the foundation. By using either a shallow frost protected slab or slab on frost wall.
Okay, and I guess one of my other concerns with that too is is the uh, I guess the leaching basins usually. If you have an infiltration BMP, you usually don't locate those in contaminated soils, because that um. Could um basically make the groundwater um a bigger issue, so. That was my main concern is those leaching basins relative to the contaminated soil, so um. Just maybe getting some documentation that. Yes, the soil is suitable for infiltration, you know, none of the contamination is water soluble or anything like that. So that was that was one concern, the other concern is um, I didn't see any like accessible parking. On site, um you know, I know you have five parking spots and I know. If you were to add accessible parking on site, you'd probably lose two spots to the. The parking spot and the access aisle, so I wanted to kind of bring that up as well.
We were under the threshold for ADA parking.
Okay.
And the the number of spaces that we're providing.
Okay, due to the the amount of units that you have, is that correct? Okay, that's that's all I had for, you know, immediate questions. Thanks, Chris.
Um, if you could just help us understand, I don't know. What those regs are, so if you could help the board understand over this review process. They've just helped me out. Sure, is that if that's a federal reg, state reg, or if that's part of our zoning bylaws, um that's all.
We can pull that together as important.
Um, okay, um, thanks, Jim, any? Any questions for Jim as so next steps will be for green engineering to. Provide a formal review and then comments back and forth until comments are cleared. Um, do you so do you have any questions for for Jim at this time? Uh, Jim, is landscape part of your scope as well?
Yes.
And landscapes next? Okay, so I get you can hang around for landscape, but I wanted to front load your conversation so we could release you for tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll be quick.
All the time you need.
So I'm gonna jump to the pretty page. As you know, there's not a lot of space left on this site for landscape. We're trying to green what we can of what is left. Um, I think that as Matt showed in some of the precedent photos. Creating this street edge with the building, um but not as a single mass and the form of the building, which. Need more to, but trying to create this free edge as the urban condition is really important, but then. Getting these sort of green pockets or green moments on hand, let's look at some screening of the parking. Um, some screening to the uh adjacent suburb to the east. And then on the west at the narrowest part of the triangle, I think, you know, our goal is to really um. Celebrate this unusual shape of the lot. And creating this sort of extension of the building mass through these three narrow trees that are there. Especially as you approach um eastbound from west. You know, you read that end of this of this lot uh pretty strongly and we like kind of leading with this. Green piece that then grows into the building mass as you go from there. Uh, we are pretty heavily constrained, there are overhead wires in that sidewalk condition on Main Street. So that restricts our ability to put a really wide spreading tree. Um, so those are three fairly coloner narrow trees, so. On the bottom, we had our initial plant palette, we've gotten some feedback from both the tree committee and conservation. Um, we had a predominantly native palette, but they're interested in us making some swap outs of a few of the non-native things that we had. So we're working on um on um some changes to the plant palette, but really the illustrative seems, you know. Barely much the way it is uh in the current condition where we've got several trees and then a thickly planted understory. Um, we're looking to do establishment irrigation only, um so it could not be irrigated, not draw from uh municipal water in the long term. Condition. And uh, you know, really act as a foil to the building that is going there. So that was. My shtick, if uh Jim, I don't know if you had any particular landscape observations right after that.
Jim, do you have any feedback at this time regarding landscaping?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Thanks, any questions from the board about landscaping?
I think it looks good, yeah, the tree committee, they really like native stuff, so I think if you're gonna make some swaps, then that's fine. Love of Bearberry, I'm thrilled.
So one thing that. The landscaping touches on and actually it might be a question of Bill Nimsor is. Some of the landscaping along Railroad Street is actually on town line. Town property, because property line is not the wall, property line is a foot or so in from the wall. So Bill, how's that work out? They gotta get easement for everything they do there, how's that gonna work?
The way we, well. It's two things about that, we get we want to get the okay from DPW to plant it there, but typically. Um, what we do is get an agreement um in in the decision. If or if there's a memorandum agreement, in this case, we probably do a decision that the applicant is responsible for maintenance um. In co-preturity.
So just an O and M plan essentially?
Yeah, I know what I'm playing. Yeah.
I think technically the actual group, excuse me, the actual root balls will be. Planted within the property line, certainly the branching or the, you know, stems may. Fall into that area there, but I think that um, yeah. Uh, O and M plan is fine, but it it sort of goes within reason that. This property will be maintaining those plants and. That would include that sort of ten to tw- you know, fourteen inch gap. Between the plantings themselves and the face of that wall that's there.
But the just to be clear, I'm just so I can craft a, you said the root balls will all be planted on properties.
Yes.
So it would be a question of overhanging. Maintenance. Okay, so then that.
Well, there's some graphed ground cover and then there's whatever it is, stone or.
You mean this?
Stone or whatever behind the building.
Yes, that that's a fresh stone proposed, and then I believe that the. Line of dark green that is north of the patio there right at the end of the building, not so grow of shrubs, so. You know, that that would be the eventual width of the shrub, but the actual root balls will sit within.
Um, even the stone that's being placed, so that will be placed on town property?
Yeah.
So that would be the intention, you know, this is sort of the.
It'll be, you know, I don't think we, I don't think anyone here has an issue with.
Yeah, I think it's a challenging.
I think it's fine.
Situation of the of the site, Matt, I don't know if you have any.
I the the planning, I don't think the planning board has any issue with any of that, we just want to make sure that.
It's written down.
It's just clear. Because we've 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 seen issues with previous projects that haven't been clear. So it's just clear.
And and I don't want it to have to like go to the town meeting or something.
Yes.
When it's an easement on town property, not a town easement, private.
Right. So that's all.
So we just clarify that so I can make sure and if they ask if it is.
When to be, so that be something that we handle in like a landscape maintenance. Report or specification where it calls for.
I would I would start with what is being placed on town property and Bill will. Get that to DPW and the probably hopefully just TPW.
Currently, it's paved, right? Like currently, it's paved all the way up to that retaining wall.
Yes, and they had their signage mounted on the retaining wall.
Who's signage?
Uh, hips long parking.
I mean.
It's none of it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah.
Just I I would, I would, yeah, I would just start with what's being placed on town property and then we'll we'll take it from there.
And my suggestion would be to keep moving along would be do that. And coordinate with DPW, whether like just how they, and we just put it in a condition or whatever they.
I check with select board too. I check with select board too, because. And if DPW land.
That's a good point.
We have a we have a select board liaison we've got too.
There it is.
There it is.
Alright, sorry to bog down in that detail, um. Any any other comments from the planning board? Um, Jim, I'm happy to release you for the evening.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
They have a landscape. It comes up, snow storage.
So that was part of the reason the, as you see the cursor here, the planting at the end. Here is uh ornamental grasses, so the idea is, you know, those will get cut down in the late fall around now. And that some amount of snow storage can occur there at the front of those parking spaces.
And any additional snow storage would be trucked offsite if necessary.
In an exceptional. So that.
Yeah.
I think we're good on landscaping. Um, my big picture, I would. Just review, you know, we've already reviewed with tree committees submitted and. See what works and if something doesn't, just give us a general feedback on why, that's it.
First slide is the uh zoning proposal. Um, the bottom left, you've seen this quite a bit now, but it's the pizza sheet, make sure that description, Bill, uh pizza sheet site. Just kind of fading out the perimeter of the site, but you can still see um everything that's there, there's my cursor. Um, the parking on the opposite side of the street starts um right after the curb cut going into the mill and continues down to the end and then. Um, on our side of the street, the one fifty-one, the odd number side, um starts in front of, I think, the pizza, big old. Shop there. Um, the upper three images are the existing zoning that pink is the business district. Color that's coming from the zoning climate on the wall, um but Bill there seeing the existing property on this first image. Um, the second image is showing what is allowable by um zoning code um for the property in white. And the third image, a little bit. In here is showing um the proposal, so it's just showing scale of the existing building. What is allowable by the by the zoning code and our proposed building that we're intending to. What is allowable by the by the zoning code and our proposed building that we're intending to. Uh put on the property here. Um I don't think I can zoom in here unfortunately, so I apologize for small numbers, but. Um I know you guys maybe have it in front that you can see. I might have to zoom forward, but. Yeah, everyone is.
Not sure.
And don't worry about it.
I can just talk it through. I know you guys have it in front of you. There you go. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so we're in the business district. Um the lot area is approximately seventy-five hundred square feet. Um the existing building footprint on that property is almost seventeen hundred square feet. Um based on the zoning code um with all the setbacks. Uh the allowed um building footprint is about sixty-seven hundred square feet. And what we're proposing is about twenty-seven hundred square feet, so maybe a third or so um of the allowable. Um the building height is currently just under twenty feet. Um the code calls for a maximum forty-five. Uh we're trying to be more on the height and scale of the mill on the other side of the street, so at about thirty-five feet. Is what um is opposing here. Um existing is commercial retail, so it's changed over the years. Um mixed use is what's allowed and then mixed use is what we're proposing here for a building usage type. Um lot frontage, we're we're conforming there. Um minimum is twenty feet. And we're doing hundred twelve feet. Um front yard setback as well is is conforming, it's ten feet max and we're just about plus or minus a foot. Um side yard setbacks again con- conforming to um the code here. Um rate is about seventy-seven feet that allows for parking. Um the left because it's a triangle, it says not applicable, so just leaving it as that. Um the rear yard is uh zero feet minimum, we got it. Some side back there and so it's gonna be about point six, I'm gonna get back to the shape. It does stagger in and out a bit. Um on the rear yard. Um the floor area ratio uh for mixed use is is ninety percent or or nine. Um and we're at thirty-six percent here with the three floors for the floor area ratio. Um so the parking line item is the one item discussed already that's not. Um conforming per our proposal right now. Um one point five square, uh one point five parking spots is what's recorded per residential unit that. Multiplied by three, four point five, we round up to the five required. Um I think earlier, um somebody and you had mentioned. Um that it's six uh parking spots for retail, so small item, it's actually five, so it's it's ten required parking spots, not eleven. So just a small correction there for the record, um because the retail space is about twenty-three hundred square feet. So small item, but still. Uh outside, it's also always. Um any questions on that? Um this is the architectural site plan. Won't spend too much time on this because we've seen the um. Civil and the landscape, we just rotated it a little bit for far favor. Um you can see some of the plantings. Some of the paving around the building, some of the parking. Spots that we're proposing, um this kinda shows that um clear area for for snow and then again trucked off site if. If required. Just to walk through floor plans briefly, um there is a central entrance that's shared by residential units on the home. And the commercial units. Um you can go left and right into one of the commercial units, we're hoping for. Either a small office, some form of nice retail store um to add to um the town. Um and then you can go up the stairs to the residential units up above. I think once there are tenants, we would study these floor plans further, but just what we're proposing this time. Um up on the second and third floor, you can walk through to the residential units. On the second floor, there is a unit on either side that you can access from the second floor. On the right side of the plan in this pinkish reddish color, um it's a two-unit, two-bedroom, two-bath. Excuse me, two-bedroom, two-bath unit um with the living area over on the right. Just kinda see kitchen, um living room and dining area. And then over on the left, it is a two-floor. Single unit. So you walk into that living area, there's a bathroom powder room. You can walk up the stairs to the bedrooms or keep moving on into the kitchen. Um to stay on this unit, once you're up the stairs, uh there's two bedrooms, one on either side of the stairs and a shared bathroom. Um on the other side, once you walk up the main shared staircase, there's only access to the. Second two units, two two bed, two two bath units. Um and there's no access into the the double height unit uh at this location. I was there. There's some questions on that.
Um just so your team's aware, uh this is great, we love it, but planning board has nothing to do with interior design.
Correct.
So um it's just not our priority. But I do like the space.
It's really fun to see.
We're almost at the end. Um so the roof plan, very simple, just showing showing mountain plan, a good drainage. Um a skylight to get some light into that that shared staircase. Um that's that's about it for for the roof where. Um. Kind of ahead in terms of thinking out some of these things, mostly thanks to. Um in terms of the um exterior, which may be more in in your interest. Um this is probably updated relative to what you have in front of you, based on some of the kinds you've gotten back, try to. Um add a little bit more detail. I think some of the drawings you have may have multiple iterations that we were thinking about. Um but try to land on one so that there's there's maybe less uh discussion from from your guys' part. Um but what we're trying to do with the finishes of the building and the look and feel of the building is um. Most towns in in US and probably more so in New England has that hierarchy of buildings. That civic building, that historic building, that municipal building in terms of scale, materials. Um usage of the building. And what we're trying to do is thi- this is, this is not even a community building, it's it's a private building. We're trying to not compete with the rest of the civic historic buildings, trying to complement, but not compete with where where. Um uh context. So um the materials we've selected here is that dark granite foundation as the water table. Um that we've seen in so many examples. Um a darker base, we're thinking about a slate, a green slate. That separates the commercial um from the residential. And then uh siding up above, um along with some additional architectural details that we personally. Um like as a visiting team such as the baton strips. Um that adds to some verticality to the to the building. So in terms of height, um you know, we we want, we'll do further. Um more renderings of this, but we have tested it, so it's the same height as the buildings across the street. So again. Um not on the railroad side, but but on the mill side, on the main street side, trying to not compete, not overpower, um but but complement. Um the neighborhood here. Um in terms of windows, the four light windows is something that we took from the mills, bringing it across the street. Um and then the the rest of the building is trying trying to have a modern look, but uh but uh but also not to overpower. The context with with its um modern feel.
Is that a canopy over the sidewalk or?
It it is just a, it's a shallow canopy. It's it's not over the sidewalk, it is within the property line. Um so it is a canopy, but it's it's not going over the sidewalk, it's just um slate overhang. Um over the retail portion of the building. Which we probably have minimal signage on. Um there wouldn't be signage up on top or overpowering signage, but minimal signage. I think that may be shown a little bit better here. We're just seeing retail office depending on what the tenant is and maybe some small. Um suspended signage that you can see driving past or from the sidewalk that may be slightly lit. But again, um minimal here in terms of signage on the exterior. These two views, it's the same thing we've been looking at, just the flat elevations. And then this is, this is the rear elevation, which we did get some feedback from the this, from the pay review. And um looking into some ways to make this rear elevation a little bit. I like say up you. Um same elevation, just black and white, wanna make sure that we meet metal requirements. Then that front and rear elevation as well. Um this little herb cut in the in the. Um section of the grade there is is the retaining wall and and rail trail on the on the other side. Um couple of last slides here, I'm just showing a night rendering. Um I have one more slide showing some lighting calculations. Just that we're not creating uh a bright. Absorbing an amount of light, it's minimal. In in fact, most of the lights coming off the building would be from inside the units coming out the windows, which. Um the rendering is is a little dramatic, those may may have some blinds just depending on the ends, of course. But most of the light is coming from inside the building, not on the outside. We do have exterior lights. Um the lighting calculation will show what amount of light that's giving off, but we're not um. Brightening up the street with signage and and. We put it like here. Uh so jump into that and.
Not sure why you did.
So there you go. Alright, that that'll work. Um so this is just showing the calculations in terms of foot candles. Um this space is probably about fifty foot candles. Most office spaces that we're designing is roughly thirty-five to fifty. Foot candles depending on what um type of space it is. Um some of these newer like lab buildings that you're seeing, the amount of light that's coming out of those, that's seventy. So typical office space is thirty to fifty. Um there are no numbers higher than three foot candles on this slide. And the threes are right below um the light pole uh within the um property itself. As you start to get onto the sidewalk, um it's it's a bunch of ones. Um behind the building, it's it's a bunch of ones. Um but again, it's just showing that there's there's minimal lighting, lighting that you can see the building a bit lighting and you can walk past, but it's not. Um in your face or disruptive to.
What would it take to get the sidewalk to three?
Um well, if I go back one slide. Um that's not that.
One is one point zero is actually the um egress route requirement. So three is actually very bright for uh an exterior pathway.
I'm concerned about the public space, not the building egress.
One thing that.
Light up the sidewalk.
One thing that we've noticed is there's a light pole on the side, on the end of the building. There's one from called the middle of the property and one a little bit beyond and this like. Pole doesn't have a fixture. That would probably help with that light pole, it was to have a fixture, but it looked, the majority of the. Street here, I think, is every other. Um.
Alright, so what can you do to compensate for that missing light pole missing?
Wait, what are the fixtures? Are they sconces on the side of the building?
Yeah, so at the retail um entry, which again, depending on the tenant, we're not sure if they would prefer to use that entry or the main entry. But um those would be sconces beneath on the on the sidewalk frontage. Um it would just be recessed lights in the canopy. Um pointing down. Um so you're you're seeing, you're seeing a bit of light on the sidewalk, but obviously where. Ends the light, the light ends. So your sidewalk is getting lit from from the building, just.
I just can't tell from that one how much that's just coming out the windows. Like if the interior was dark, what was the sidewalk look? I think probably discussed as a team and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair question. The overhang that George mentioned, um there's a, you've noticed the faceting on that side of the building. So where that's faceted, that's what's overhanging in that first floor retail space.
Right.
Within that floor thickness is an opportunity to put in recess cans, basically recessed light fixtures.
Right.
So to answer your question, I'm trying to illuminate the sidewalk itself. You know, if it was allowable, you could create an aperture in that can that would spill onto the sidewalk and illuminate it. You know, like a light in your kitchen, recessed downlighting. So you've got opportunities there, if that's the goal. Um you know, a lot of people don't want, the reason we do these like house. Um is to show that we don't spill offsite, but if there's a desire, we do that, I would think that would be common. That'd be up to you guys.
Well, uh like just thinking about, you know, um the improved pedestrian experience, I think what a bit more. Uh an appropriate amount of light to make, you know, safe passage for people who are going to the retail shops or just walking by. Would be beneficial, I think.
People have been, um we've at times uncomfortable walking on that said particular strip and this board has worked. Uh hard with a number of projects that are on Main Street in particular to to eliminate. The walkway without being like, you know. You know, going nuts, but.
Makes sense.
But I think that would be um. The uh uh the improvement that would be relative, this, you know, straightforward to make, and I think someone would. Uh enjoy that.
Is there a nice, just cause I don't know, is there a night sky regulation in there for fixtures?
There is, our planning board rules and regulations for pictures, dark sky compliance.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, all the fixtures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's just. Yeah, so that could still get achieved.
Yeah, yes. Um and in it's not. Full dark sky of all fixtures is not necessarily required, obviously, you have safety lights, parking lights, it's not necessarily. I'm I'm interested, so in other projects, we've been able to accomplish um some of these sort of safety. Um. Uh safety improvements of the sidewalk lighting through more traditional sconces that are tied to like the, they're sort of more brick. And mortar um buildings we have in town. Um I'm curious what type of. Lighting sconce or lighting apparatus would be appropriate for this type of design, um which is clearly not. You know, meant to match the mill buildings and some of the other building structures we have in town.
I think the fixtures were selected first for the dark sky compliance and to minimize light spillage, but they're. They're relatively minimal and small and comparable to the new fly-by-night store. I don't know if you've been by. There at night, they have a couple of pretty small sconces that were just casting a little bit of light down the wall. And something like that is what they had in mind. And then some of the newer. Lighting at the interior spaces at Mill and Main or the interior playground spaces, which are. Uh mix of followers and postlights.
Um are those specs included in the package?
The actual fixtures, we just know, but we can.
Okay. Once we, once we get to a final, we should probably just stick them in there.
Yeah, we do, we we got a consultant on the way to felt the lighting calculation.
What was the consideration on lighting on the north side of the property adjacent to the uh trail? Was there any consideration for that?
Yes. So. So they actually did specify what the light fixtures were. Apologize, that is actually on the drawings, we can get. But sheets are further information, but um. This drawing is probably illustrating the lighting, the light locations the best. Um the red dots are the lighting locations. You can see the two sconces. Um your retail side and then the um canopy recessed lights. Um along the sidewalk side on the south and then on the north that you were questioning, it would be uh sconces as well. Um again, we were making sure we're within compliance within within our property. Um lines and setbacks. So the intention that that we had was to not um try to spill light over. But along um a couple of these lines, where the light fixtures are, you are seeing some some ones. Which does eliminate it more than than it is currently. Which does eliminate it more than it is currently, um but. That can, that can be visited a little bit further. Um so we, we do have three sconces along that side.
How high up are those?
Sorry.
How high up are those sconces?
Um.
Just trying to figure out visibility to the apartment across the street.
There. I think eight feet is like, like the label is.
What's the wall there? What's the height of the wall about? Or how high is the rail trail about?
That, or it's probably thirty inch, two feet thirty inches.
Okay.
There, it gets up to up just under four, about where that, the back of that car is, I think.
Okay.
Those are the rural park cars.
So it's five to six feet above the ground surface of the trail, it sounds like that.
Would you wanna see more or less lighting on the most?
I have, I, I think it's helpful to have, I think the project adds value by having some spillover to the, to the trail. I don't know what the right amount is.
It's a catch twenty-two.
Right.
Even the neighbors on the far side.
Right.
And like spillage and the potential of giving some added lights for the trail.
Yeah, and also, you know, the tricky thing about that side of the building is. Yeah, the balance between having them looking at a big black box, not black, but at night. Uh versus, you know, it, it is. It's hard to figure out what they should be looking at.
A nice laser show on.
There you go. They can project movie, no, just kidding.
Natalie, are you talking about Tim's comments on, or on the, are you talking about with lighting?
I'm talking about the lighting. But yes, I mean, that also is relevant to Tim's comments about um the back of those, um being a little.
Yeah, that's what I thought maybe before we leave tonight, we go back, I had a question for them.
Bill, if you could switch us back to the images, uh Jordan and Johnson actually did do a elevation with. All the windows, okay.
Any other questions on lighting, guys? On, on the luminosity?
I, I do have a question on that in terms of, you know, uh the way we're trying to address light spillage off of the site. Uh in terms of couches and stuff like that, it sounds like you guys are amenable, a little higher level on a sidewalk, on a bike path and stuff. Is that a discretion you guys can sort of weigh in on when that goes up saying, hey, guys, we'd love you to. You know, it still needs to be dark sky, but we'd love to have it cast out there further. Because again, that's something that we try to avoid, as Jordan was mentioning, but if that's something that you guys are actually looking for. Then that could probably be accommodated, so.
I think that's the direction we're giving, is that the project will add value.
Yeah.
If there's designed spillover.
Okay.
Into the public accessible walking areas. Um but that also does not impact neighbors.
Yep.
So it's that balance, I think, is that fair?
Yeah, in the back, it'll have to depend on the sconces and, yeah, you know, how they, how they're looking from across the.
So you, you're not gonna get in trouble.
Yeah.
If you, if. No, I'm just, I guess insinuating, it wouldn't be a glow so much as more. You know, you're just spreading out a little bit further to capture the sidewalk, get a little bit of the dimension, and then now on the back. You know, there is a benefit to being on the rail trail, people do use it at night, right? So you're coming up to that intersection and have some illumination there, I think you're pretty, you know, peel.
And there's a safety element too, to the backside of the building, like it's nice to have some luminosity, the police will appreciate that.
As well with residents, I would imagine, so, yeah.
I think, I think we just have to balance, because we, you know, we've. We've had um the residents, you know, we wanna make sure that it's.
Well, and the official.
Either adjustable or downcast enough.
The official recommendation for the Esbit River Rail Trail is for use from dawn to dusk, just saying. So I don't think we need to be lighting up the whole trail, and I mean, the sidewalk is my main concern.
Yeah.
But if we just have some stuff that's eight feet tall, I don't mind that.
But there's also.
Where somebody's parked.
Which, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so don't worry, at the end, we'll still blame you for getting them on.
Yeah. No, I think you guys were thinking about it, right, because that's what I want my neighborhood, so.
I'd want that light pole to be. Have Wisconsin added, but well, it's never gonna happen, so. And this, this will be the best we can do.
That's a whole other.
Well, that's what we use for leverage, if people don't like this idea.
There you go.
Yeah. We'll just make it kind of a Wisconsin.
And all that paint.
Yeah, yeah, plenty of words, increased time electricity cost.
We had a big dark sky meeting in Maynard just a couple of weeks ago, I went to it.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Talk about boring. No, actually, it was, it was, it was, it was interesting.
Yeah, exactly, was the lighting.
I wanted to have it on that sidewalk.
Let me share and. It'll be on there, but it'll show up on the video. Bingo, bingo.
Thanks. But this, this was in response to one of the comments um about the rear area. And we didn't have enough planning to Photoshop the same like we did with some of the elders. Um but we do have a couple of thoughts to address those comments um by, by the peer review. One of them is expanding the window heights. Um the, the main reason primarily was, was maybe. Budget, a couple of little savings here, but. Um in hearing that, those comments, there's no reason why those windows couldn't be elongated at the front, so that it's a little more special moment. As opposed to. Just, just minimal openings, which, which does change the look of it a lot from this black side and, and just. We're looking from railroad street now to, to the building, sorry, I didn't clarify. Both of these, yeah, seriously, this is what the original design was, the, the elevation that's in the package. And then this is in response um to um the, the peer view. So elongating the windows and what we are further studying as well, which was part of the recommendations was, there is um. Some blank walls on the, on the lower portion of the building that could be a place for some art. Um maybe like so, something tasteful, some graffiti work, a local artist or something, that when you're riding past the rail trail during the day. It adds a little more excitement to this side of the building. Um so that would probably be done in conjunction with the town. Um as, as best as can be accommodated, um so making the windows. Longer so that it looks like the front of a building and not a, a building, and then adding some art. Um we think can, can help address this. And the, the last, um the one that we did, we were able to Photoshop in a bit, was the view from um the corner. Um of the, of the pizza looking down the rail trail, you're not really seeing the back of that building, but we just wanted to give that view. Um so you can, uh you have everything to accommodate everything.
That is very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um regarding the mural, um if that wants to be part of the project decision, meaning if, if that's an element. That adds value to the project for the point of word to sign on, we would just need to figure out how to formalize that.
We've, we've done it.
Yeah.
We've done it with um.
I'll take, they don't know.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
We, we both got it. We, we, we have language in the decision about arts, right? That, that we were like providing the ability for a mural to be provided. You know.
It's, we've done it a couple of ways, we've done it where there's a, there's a specific design that's proposed prior.
Right.
And we did it where the board designated somebody to. Act on behalf of the board.
Oh yeah, that was me.
Yeah, that was, we've also said, you know, you just say this area can be used as a mural if the. Town mural committee wants to do something.
Cultural district, I think we've, we've written in that the applicant can work with the cultural districts to, at a future date. Paint something there.
And that's how you get credit for the murals, that we document how it's getting, getting formalized.
Which newer projects said that?
Um.
What number was it in the window?
Uh I don't remember what number it is, there's a new pot shop that has mural in the window.
Right by Plaza Cafe.
Yep.
Just in one, and can, we did it with um. The other pot shop, didn't we? So we did it with um. Oh, Olivia, I think, didn't we?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I have to look.
Hmm, oh, you mean the one at arts?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just hasn't happened yet.
Right, 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 yeah. It's, um, who's actually finished one, um. Well, we got the ones on Murphy Snyder, which were not part of the project, they were kind of a. We sponsored those.
Yep.
On both sides of Murphy Snyder, we got the one in the, in the, you know, record.
Did that answer your question or?
Yeah, for those of us wondering how the, those all seem like applied to existing buildings as opposed to. The approval for.
I feel like just, yeah.
Yeah.
Check the condition for the arts specialties, the mural.
Yeah, well, how did we, we wrote it in a good way at arts, because it was.
You can look it up later.
It was kind of.
I would, yeah, I'd take this off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to, if you wanted to be part of the decision and get credit for it with the community, that's part of the decision, just to formalize it.
Certainly it would be in downtown over the district.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's something to be really cool on the rail trail there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, what's next?
Um.
Is that it?
That was, yeah, this was the thing I had questions about, this, Tim's.
So you're, you're good on questions, Bill? Alright.
I have one question I'm gonna ask um the team after.
Slow suspension, okay, soon. Alright, so, okay, turn it over to the board, any big picture questions, comments at this time regarding the project?
I have two quick ones, um. I didn't see anything on the site planner, on the roof plan about like. Mechanical equipment, I don't know how like, if there's gonna be stuff on the roof or on the ground. Or, uh like mini splits or something that would be used. I wasn't sure if you were thinking about that, and if, if they were on the site or on the roof, they needed screening or anything.
So one thing we did do on, if we go back to that last image, there's, we created an overhang. On this uh. Eastern corner for the electrical metering. So that can be accessible between the retaining wall and the building. Uh, it's, each, each of the units, the condensers would be rooftop.
Was the second to last slide that had it.
Oh, and this one is shadow?
Still stuck in the fifties, don't.
There you go. So lower left hand corner. Is the setback set in? Oh, I saw.
Mm-hmm, so originally that was three stories continuous, but we pushed the ground floor in to have space for metering. So we don't have any of that stuff on the more visible side of the building.
Will there be a form of screening on here?
Well, that's, there's, that's where the retaining wall is like four feet tall or something.
And the wood fence on top.
And the wooden fence.
Yeah, so that's your stop, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the mechanical units would be set in to the building as far as this can be. Um you know, these aren't large anymore.
Right.
Um, we haven't gone too much in detail of what that would, but it, it'll probably be multiple mini splits for the units. Um that would be smaller and set into the center of the building, so it's not visible from the street's case. Okay.
And then the other one was just the uh. Trash cans and stuff in the parking lot, was that meant to be like in an enclosure, or is that just kind of a open space for?
So one of the challenges of the parking lot is that a typical dumpster truck can't. Access a dumpster in the parking lot and empty it, so. I found a company in New York that does tote containers, so it's essentially an enclosure that you put a, a regular household tote. In, so all of the totes would be protected and out of sight, but accessible for users.
Okay, really?
And, and servicing.
That was one of my questions is servicing the trash, so.
Um Bill also asked that question before the meeting, and that's something. That we'd have to figure out is how those get pulled to the street and emptied, so I'd have to talk to an actual. Removal company about that.
My concern is they block the width of the sidewalk, that would be a problem.
I believe there are some private haulers that at least in a, a typical residential. Go back in your driveway and take the totes.
Yeah.
You know, down the back of the driveway, so it's possible, but.
Yes, especially given that it's so few units.
Right, it's a pretty small.
Yeah.
Amount of.
But I, I don't even know if this is town trash service or not.
Oh, for three units, I think.
Yeah, but maybe because of the business, it's not, I don't know.
It'd be good to just give clarity around that.
I'm not, I'm not deep into that.
Yeah, understood, we get it. Other questions, comments?
I'm Phil, come with me.
I have a question first.
Is your, your prerogative? Natalie just over will do.
Um. Can we real quick ask about maintaining sidewalk access during construction? Clearly, it's a very tight site. Um but since maybe there's all that extra space in the road for a potential future parallel parking spaces. Would you be, I mean, could we? Maybe we could find out if BPW would be amenable to, um you know, routing the sidewalk. Onto the street with dirty barriers or something, depending on how long of the construction, like how long the sidewalk would have to be shut down.
So we did just have some comments from Rain at BPW that they would be looking for us to repave all of the concrete sidewalk. Along the heartbeat boundary, as well, as well as we worked a couple of other curb cuts that we hadn't anticipated at first, I think Dan spoke to them.
Yeah.
But um as far as construction fencing and uh in process. Estri protection, we hadn't looked at that very closely yet.
Yeah, the question is, of course, just construction mitigation.
Yeah.
Right, how do we mitigate safety for?
Two, two points to that, one is, since all the parking on the other side of the street is rarely used. That provides some good width to steal. For pedestrian accommodation along the site frontage.
Yeah.
And also, I was curious about potential impacts on the rail trail, because if that got shut down for like. Two weeks in the summer, that might be a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Would you anticipate construction shutting down the rail trail?
I think we're gonna try to figure out how to shoot one as much into the site property boundary as we can, we'll probably have to. Stage some materials uh in coordination with some of the mill parking, but the most part, you know. Try to run it tightly within the bounds.
Okay.
I had originally looked at doing a mass timber building, but there were too many logistical problems with. Doing a timber frame with forty-foot long planks.
Do you want me to do a mass timber building?
That's fun. Um my question about maintaining the sidewalk access is that in the past, we've had issues with projects that drag on much longer than anticipated. And um sidewalks being shut down or, you know, random crosswalks being thrown in across roads to get you to the other side. I just wanna make sure that that isn't what happens, I don't anticipate that it would be, but you know, it's just, we're just trying to keep it in mind.
It is detailed question, Bill.
Uh, better be detailed. Yes, alright, well, I, hopefully, we'll see a piece that chose the bike rack.
Oh, yeah. Or at least tell us.
Maybe it's in there, but maybe it's a full bike rack, I don't.
The bike rack itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we produced the cut for that, yeah, we just sent it.
On the town standard that you, or, or at type.
He doesn't like the S ones. That's all I'm telling you.
Yeah, those are terrible. Nobody can buy.
Um, we have a, we have a bylaw regarding bike storage.
At play, like, so wait, I don't think we've done that design.
But, uh, uh, is there a U shape or the lollipop ones, or some municipalities have a?
Did we end up?
Way to double attach.
Well, didn't we have? We didn't, we didn't formalize anything, but didn't we have designs, didn't we sketch some things ourselves?
That was me, I haven't done it yet, I'm very busy.
Board rules regs, what, what we do has, the only standards we have are on public property with um, the.
Yeah.
You know, that, so.
We can ride a country.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Um and then, you had a comment earlier about talking to BPW about. On street parking, now. Now, a couple of things, one is, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if. Parking on the south side of the street, all of it went to the north side of the street. It, it doesn't do anything on the south side of the street, and.
You mean it doesn't do anything?
No, it uses.
There's more businesses on the north side, I think.
Is, there's that built thing.
Yeah, and there's some farther down, so, you know, rear four spaces. On the south side of the street, had to go away to create rear four spaces on the north side of the street. That would be a good trade, because then people wouldn't have to walk the paths, the busy. That would be a good trade, because then people wouldn't have to walk the path, the busy tough street, definitely wash the spaces. But then the other issue is, of course, neither spit, didn't know how UPS and bloopers are gonna. They don't need.
Right.
Which I think they can do easily now.
All the questions, comments?
I'm curious about uh the the parking lot of uh with that acute corner of. Getting into the parking lot and then vehicles getting into especially the two parking spots on the west side and maneuvering that um. You guys thought about that and? How that'll work? Yeah, so we we do put the, this is this is a relatively sharp angle to get into the parking area from. The street, but we do have the, you know, the twenty four foot width. Between spaces and the twenty four foot width of the access from the street, so. So there should be room to maneuver into those parking spaces for a typical vehicle.
Make a three point, is what you're saying, something like that?
Potentially for that first um western spot. If they're coming from. The east side.
It's it's really simple, really, you just rent it out to folks that back in the parking spots. Why have this steep angle on the?
And say, and said, yeah, there is a utility pole and a fire hydrant.
Oh, right, oh, yeah, look at that, right there.
And I went back and forth with probably fifteen different lot designs and I just.
Yeah, okay.
I don't wanna have to relay all the electrical lines along.
I think that's a good call.
I wouldn't either. Good. Chris, Chris.
Yeah, that's, we talked about trash stuff.
All right, let me know if you have anything.
I'm good.
Okay, um, so. Good picture, we, there's a parking request for parking reduction. Um. The one comment is where do, where do employees park? So that means where do employees park? Long term.
Um, well, yeah, I mean, is it, is the, I think that realistically could be accommodated, the the shared. Um. Shared streets.
It it just means a response, that's all.
Yeah. There's a provision in the downtown over this, if they use a shared parking, but. We um. Makes these products, you know, to encourage that and then, yeah. Chris is right, it just says.
And there are certain parking areas, are they're not all two hour parking, right?
Just just a road is.
River Street, there are there are specific parking lots that are not two hour parking, so.
Yeah, but they're pretty far away, effectively too far.
Well, not for employees who are working a full day necessarily.
Yeah, I think we have a. Site limit or distance limit.
Um, some of the thing about it, there's a both both kind of a regulatory side, the two hour parking, which not a big. Not gonna comment that, but um but you you know, uh if we. If for some reason there's a employee started parking in front of other businesses, other businesses may start voicing opinions about it, so just something to consider. Right, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm wondering if the uh. What what I post offices is that two hours?
Anyway, just. Something to put some thought, that's all. Um, I'll, we need to open up for public comment, so um I I will open up public comment. Um. Bill, can you check? Looks like no one's online. Is there any public comment in the room tonight? Uh, I think you're the only member of the public, I think that's true.
Now I feel obligated.
Don't you?
Shut off, what's this country lane? I would encourage you with your backside lighting to think about the lighting conditions as you transition. To the roadway at night as a cyclist and matching those roadway lighting conditions for ease of visibility, protecting pedestrians and automobiles.
Thank you.
I have that.
Anything else? Oh, good comment. I'll call it the best comment of two thousand twenty five.
I drop.
Um, all right, so we need to get the peer review. Um. That'll be taking care offline. Um, do you guys have any? Questions for us, anything that you have heartburn about? Okay. Um, continuance?
Yeah, what would be um? What's your comfortable mileage and we'll meet in seven minutes. But you're good, you know, that. You, that would be the more. You know, we did it. Ahead of time, but the reviewer probably needed. Needs that. Now, is that doable, you say? So, you know, or you can, or you can, we can schedule it, if you know, you know, if you need to get a convenience, I'm sure the.
Yeah, obviously, it's a.
If the if the chair is okay with that.
We can, yeah.
I think we've started to address most of the comments we've gotten, so it's just a matter of packaging and editing.
And for some reason, there was a a problem, you could just request a case in system. Is that okay, what I think?
Yeah, I I've. Like time by me, first week in December or first meeting in December.
First meeting December midnight.
Yeah, that's what I got to. All right, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until. December ninth at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor of the continuance, please return. It's five zero to continue. Thanks, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Yep. One question you just asked. No.
No.
Here we go.
Okay, no minutes. This is funny. You have any updates?
For me? No.
I got one, Tom.
You have an update?
I really don't see it. The complaint.
Is it about paint?
No, it's about the powder mill road, grant that we got.
Is there a problem there?
Well.
Like six hundred grand, what we're gonna get out of that, somebody's spending a.
Yeah.
We'll get a survey, just do that, then somebody's just gonna give us a design that.
Thanks.
That's like.
And then, so what we really need, some of that money. To go do. Here we reach charrettes.
There.
Like the five percent.
I don't think you're awesome once last time.
Five percent stage main.
And they got the survey and they said, I think we're gonna make a very good stuff. By design.
Really all the grant? Really, all the grant?
Well, that's.
That's about as far as the money.
What the, I know, that's what the designer would. You know, bike friendly, okay, they face money.
But you think that percentage of surveys, I mean, you're an engineer.
Sir, that's a big. Yeah. Area.
It's a long survey.
Yeah. Order of its service, but that's the most valuable part.
Yeah.
Survey's gonna be very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, but there's still a lot less money, even if it costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Drawn lines on a CAD drawing are really expensive.
Yeah, but I I know they're just gonna.
What's your factor, though?
You should talk to the plan already.
Powder mill, we gotta figure out a way to.
He doesn't want it to be all.
Take twenty grand so we can pay peer review to charrette ideas for the.
Like interesting ideas.
Concept.
Like not just painting a bike lane on each side and calling it a day.
Well, why don't we talk about doing technical grant? We got a, we got a technical assistance grant for forty grand. I think we're gonna do December eighth, if you wanna try one, it would be M A P C has one right now, I just got it. We also got.
But we don't want the M A P C people to do it.
Then.
We want somebody innovative.
Good.
I mean, Green could do it, but. We don't want M A P C and we don't want the designers.
The who?
We want outside people to sit around and say, what about this idea? What about that idea? Then they can all figure out, well, no, not enough, well, that might work, we'll have to look into that. But I need to think that's a big order and you could totally do that wrong and just be a waste of time. For half a million buck.
And taking into consideration our new zoning that allows for. Pedestrian uh multipurpose pathways.
What do you hear it's what?
That's what they want. They don't want it in the road, they want a.
I know, but my point is. Yeah. Innovative people.
Uh, well, they're.
They don't exist.
Need a cost person, you need a a active transportation designer. And you need a constructability person.
I feel like you could just do all that, no?
Why do you think, but but what we asked for were uh with the survey and the general plans.
Right, but that's the problem, the general plan will just be. Paint down the road. That's all they're gonna do. They're gonna like, ooh, we're gonna reset this. Curb line two feet.
Bill is not impressed.
No, I understand.
I know, that's something I knew, cause it's like, well, that was in the contract, that's what the R F U said to do, so you know.
But it's hard without the survey, what we should do is hit the survey and and then take a look at it and then.
Exactly, what are you saying?
Exactly what you're doing, yeah, right, you just want to get the survey and you spend a a week thinking of ideas, then bring in some other people to. Review those ideas and maybe they come up with a lot.
Well, when we put it out there, I will. Touch base before we do anything on that. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I just don't know if you can break it apart, get fifteen or twenty grand just for an outside.
Well, maybe not, but maybe we can, we maybe we can, we're gonna have the um R F P out there, so we can. Maybe there is somebody that's gonna respond that has somebody that's um. Innovative or.
Well, they're all gonna say that.
I know people are innovative, I know when they're sticking what, believe me, nothing else, I can do that. So, no, I I it's a good point, and I I I appreciate that, and I think we could, uh, let's see your response to that, we'll say. Some of the companies um. They're beating down my doors right now, to be honest with you, um, and I just came back from the uh sleeper conference. And um because there's complete streets funding out there and there's some changes that have taken place. Um. I'm trying to coordinate with D P W, see if they wanna do on it, but we could probably. Well. Maybe we'll come up with something to that, too. But anyway, the point is that we're gonna get some good responses from companies a lot, I know we're gonna get some. Good ones, and maybe we have somebody that we do. Feel could do the job, so we just, in the interview, we ask them for it, we say, hey, let's. You know, we don't want just a a. Stripe, you're right, the the two foot stripes is it. And that's no plan.
You have to find us a hot dog.
Got a hot dog.
We could show you doing it somewhere else. Not talking about.
I was quoting him. That's what he always says.
A hot dog?
Yes. Have you not heard him say?
Well, yeah.
It is now.
Stuff like, well, we're gonna put the spoil in the butter churner. What does that mean, Bill?
I don't know. No idea what he's talking about.
You have any other updates for us?
Uh, no. I don't think of this, um. Because it's gotten um. No, no, really, it's special. Um, Steve's gonna be out of the office for. This can be for two weeks, so I'm um. Uh, well, we're gonna be. Limited for a couple of weeks, we'll be able to go on, um. Let's see the um. Bill had a a a good suggestion uh. Or another after that we're working on, so I'm gonna be meeting with them tomorrow to see if we can reconfigure. Water problems aside, but we're talking about um. Um. Site appropriateness for some designs that we're falling around with, so I may have something cool coming up, but I'm not positive on it um. Uh, we're meeting tomorrow, big water meeting.
Um, we we need to decide if you're going to redo the. A D U bylaws.
You know, we're already working that.
Okay.
Oh, you need to read, oh, I'm just, I'm incorporating from the changes now. Yeah, we need to discuss that.
And if we are gonna bring it to town meeting in the spring.
Right now, I'm gonna have the sub, the subdivision regulations. Are, which I haven't really worked on, Bill took a look at them, I need, I've got them with D P W right now, being reviewed. Um, lower subdivision regs, um. We're gonna have some cleanup stuff. With uh hopefully. Nothing wild.
Do we have anything scheduled for next meeting?
Yes, we have. Mayor crossing. Oh, if the um. Uh. They call it.
Yeah, rotisserie, rotary.
Rotisserie.
Rotisserie.
The rotaria?
Yeah.
Use permit, the turnabout.
Use permit, just use, not very excited. Oh, yeah, it's, but it'll be good.
Mark's up, I'm out.
Hmm?
Mark's up, I'm out.
Oh, at the next one?
Yeah.
What are you doing?
Doing your business.
The Thanksgiving.
Well, it's Thanksgiving week. Oh.
Um, and you're not scheduling anything the week, the last week, meeting of December, right?
The twenty third?
Should I not?
Don't schedule anything for the twenty third.
I'll be in New Mexico.
Mexico, are you, are you driving or riding your bike? You're not gonna fly, are you?
I'm I'm supposed to be.
I'm gonna tell the staff, though, no, no, don't take any name for that, I just gotta.
Yeah, the government.
Is that, is that what our date would be?
Yeah, the twenty third, which feels a little bit.
House passes.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. No, no one's gonna be here.
Christmas Eve zone.
I will give it a month. It's only till January, right?
Just like. We have our meeting.
Sign me up for that one.
Great.
What did you do to work?
Do it.
Totally, totally.
Tell the whole class.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor of the adjournment?
Uh.
Five zero to adjourn.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Senator, why does this place look like the old deck building?
What?
Like the old deck building on Martha Street.
So doesn't it look like a jail with the windows like?
I would say jail.
Yeah, like, what is that?
Is that the old deck building where Market Basket is now?
No, I.
That was exactly like that.
Is it, is it mine?
I don't, I don't know if I remember.
Concrete with these little slits like gun ports.
Yeah.
This had like it.
Kind of like.
Well, I mean, it is a tough frick, it's, I don't know what else you could do. I'm amazed I could do that.
I don't, I don't think.
Police building, windows.
It does look like it. I don't think we need another brick building. Well, no thanks.
This is gonna match. All right, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I don't want vinyl siding.
Hey, all right, welcome.
And we should open up vinyl siding.
Yeah, cause it's not. It's not expensive enough to build stuff anyways.
Thank you, thanks, guys. Thank you, thanks, guys. They're still spending. Still, I question.
You're out next week, right?
Yep.
Next meeting. Next meeting, I mean. Yeah.
Just that. But. And the meeting.
It's still true.